Good evening, welcome to the December 18th study session and we also have a special meeting, two items on the study session. First item is quarterly report of the Leavenworth School District. We have Dr. Roth here.
Once again, thank you for this opportunity to share just a little bit about our district. First of all, here's our newest edition of the Pride magazine.
We got that in the mail, didn't we?
You should, yes. Or if you're a print subscriber to the newspaper, you would have received it with that as well.
Maybe that's where I got it.
One of the things where we were just notified, and I think you might have seen a little press on this, our high school was named on the honor roll of the National AP, Advanced Placement Courses. And the criteria for that was the success of our students, the amount of courses, the amount of hours. And when I say the success of our students, the students that actually take the AP tests and do well. So this was a national recognition. So we're very proud to be able to to display those posters and make sure that our community and our school community knows what an honor that is. And so we're excited to continue to boast about that a little bit. Progress at Warren, first of all, I would like to extend a deep gratitude to Mr. Kramer and his staff, helping us with, you know, the approvals of plans and all of the behind-the-scenes that has to take place. It's been instrumental on staying on progress, keeping progress going. The weather has dampened with the snow in November. It has dampened our timeline just a little bit. And so we'll get an update sometime in the middle of January to make sure we're still meeting that December of 2019 timeline for our intermediate center. And so the next quarterly report, I should be able to give you a more accurate update on that. Our winter activities have begun, wrestling and basketball. Those activities have gone, and they've gone well. And so that'll continue with practices and activities throughout the winter break. And then our winter break begins Thursday, this Thursday, the 20th, and students will come back on January 7th. Those dates are negotiated by the teachers. So our calendar goes with those negotiated days. And so that's part of the negotiation process. And then the last thing that I'll share, prior to giving a holiday wish to you all, is that, just to remind you, we are in the winter season, as you know, and kind of give you the parameters of what we use on that canceling school. So we use a wind chill factor of 15 below to cancel for a cold day. And we use that because research shows that that's about, with 30 minutes of exposure to that temperature, frostbite could act, there could be an onset of frostbite. And we have a majority of our kids that do walk. And so that's kind of the parameter that we use for that, is a negative 15 below wind chill. And then a snow day really is communication with our maintenance department to see what our parking lots, our sidewalks and things like that, along with whatever area districts are doing. And then we rely a lot on the forecast. And so, you know, it's just the information at hand that we use for that. And so I know that that comes up in conversation quite a bit, especially when I'm out in the community. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to share with the commission, kind of our parameters and protocol for that. And then the last thing, from USB 453 to you and all of your employees, we want to wish you the most merry and safe holiday season. May all your blessings come true, and you get to spend quality time with family and friends. And other than that, I'll take questions.
Mr. Griswold, both of you, if Leavenworth closes, is Fort close, are they...
No, I think the superintendents are in contact with one another, but they're not...
They do. It's independent.
Right, it is independent. Couple of years ago, we were the only district in the region that was in school.
You heard about that?
Which I believe I made to write, Cole. The weather didn't come in. It's not, we try to stay together as much as possible, but there's circumstances in each, you know, based on personnel and things, sidewalks, those types of things. But we do try, we communicate several times with all of the Leavenworth County superintendents, and then the emergency management as well, Chuck McGaw. We're in communication with them as far as forecasts and things like that.
The Perokil schools follow your lead.
Right, correct.
In Leavenworth.
That's correct.
I think, and I just know this from, you know, being the president of the Fort Leavenworth School Board, but I think the superintendents within the county get together, you know, every six months at least, if not more frequently, to discuss...
We do, we try to meet quarterly and kind of talk about things that are happening in the area as well as the state. And then we also troubleshoot for each other as things come up.
In terms of walkers versus students being bused, did you say it's like 50% walkers?
No, we bust just over 600 kids out of 3,800. So we don't naturally have 3,200 kids walking, but we have quite a few parents that do transport. But we bust just over 600 kids. And when we get our new busing, I really look for that to probably be increased quite a bit because of availability of routes to provide students that don't normally have that right now. So when the pre-case center opens up and our new intermediate center, our transportation lines will change just slightly, and I think that will provide more transportation.
My last comment is congratulations on the AP program, but truth be told, I think Leavenworth High School for decades has had a really good AP program. So did you have to go after the, or was it something that just came into the discussion?
So it was really based on a national where kids, we're having more kids take the test now. So there's, you can have an AP course, but the AP really doesn't kick in until the kid takes the AP test. And that's not a requirement. And so we're having more students complete that, which then when you tie it into the demographics that we have to supply with that and the amount of courses that we offer, gained, garnered the attention itself, not so much of an application process.
That's really a good news story. So congratulations to the students and the staff and faculty.
It's the faculty, it's the students, it's everyone else, absolutely.
I know you guys just recently just had an assembly, you had a keynote speaker to come in about suicide prevention. Is this something that you guys are doing every quarter?
So we have a assistant principal that's really taking the lead on that and has done a nice job with that. And so she's trying to get more information to kids, along with our counselors, along with, you know, staff members and our crisis team. So they've done a nice job. It wasn't anything that was directed from myself. It was really building led with the initiative coming from them and supportive, because I think it's a very valid opportunity to educate kids on second and third choices besides the one that they see that they think is most imminent.
That's good.
Other questions for Dr. Roth?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas to you and your staff, too. Next item is the Alliance Against Family Violence update. We have the new executive director, Jennifer Marsh, here to present. Ms. Marsh, welcome. We also have General Cherry and Sandy, Cherry Brown.
Hello.
Welcome, Ms. Brown, welcome, Ms. Marsh.
How are you all this evening?
Good.
Hello.
Hi.
We're good. It's the holiday season. We just wanted to very much, first of all, thank you all for allowing us a few minutes this evening. It's a pleasure to be here. And we'd really like you all to get to know Jennifer. She has come on board as our executive director for the shelter. I want to, before I give her the floor for a minute, I really want to impress upon all of you, and I'll be in touch with the chief and a lot of other folks. We're going to have a meet and greet for Jennifer in January to give her the opportunity for a little tiny bit of one-on-one time with a lot of you folks. We have a lot of work to do in Leavenworth with this, with the alliance. And we are so excited to have brought her on. A lot of background. I'd like to give her an opportunity to visit with you a bit.
All right. Thank you for having me. I started on the 5th, so I've had about a week and a half to get my feet under me. I think we're in a really good position. The facility itself is in good shape. The board's done an extraordinary job helping to assist to bring that back to a standard where it's habitable once again. That being said, the community is also coming in, adopting rooms and making it a warm welcoming place for families in need. We do still have, as Sherry mentioned, a lot of work to do. We are at that point where our to-do list seems to be growing quicker than we can check things off. We have to have an updated security system. Obviously, that's paramount. We are fortunate enough to have a number of grants through the state, which are federal grants through the Department of Justice, that come with a long list of requirements. So we are working through those. For example, we have to set up a new case management system that's in compliance with state statistical recording methods. We're also hiring some employees, including a handful of part-time employees, case managers, sexual assault advocates, obviously shelter managers. So we have a lot to do. The board's been fantastic, and I've been overwhelmed by the support of the Leavenworth community, folks coming up and pledging their support financially or through their words and actions to the organization. So I'm excited to be here, and hopefully we will be able to open our doors early in 2018, so, 2019.
Do you have a approximate projected date yet to open, or?
We would like to try and get the doors open end of January, early February, pending any unforeseen issues.
Tell us about yourself, Ms. Marsh.
Sure. So my background in anti-violence work, I worked for over 15 years doing sexual assault, domestic violence work. I started as part of a sexual assault response team in Richmond, Virginia. And then I oversaw the domestic violence hotline for the District of Columbia. And then I went to work for an organization called RAINN, and I managed the national sexual assault hotlines and helped to stand up the Department of Defense Safe Help Line, which serves sexual assault victims and survivors in the military, CONUS and OCONUS, and then a number of other projects with the Peace Corps. I testified to Congress, and I worked with the Department of Justice on the standards for serving victims of crime.
Great.
Any questions for Ms. Marsh, or Ms. Brown? General Cherry is not speaking tonight?
Here it comes, here it comes. Yeah, if you get on the mic, if you're going to speak.
I was hoping that she would say something about herself, because she's got a lot more experience than she just mentioned here. During our interview process, we started out with 12, we ruled it down to three. We did telephonic interviews, then we ruled it down to three. What really impressed me was her ability to talk about team building. And that kind of lights my chaser, but talk about taking care of the night shift, which we have, and that, that just, I suppose, that's great. Talk a little bit about grants. In the last week and a half since she's been here, I've been kind of hanging out in the outer office. Understands grants, understands what the government wants when they give you a grant, grant assurance. Some of them are very, very complicated, special instructions from A to U. So understands that. Married, mother of four, followed her husband here who works for the Fed, and was working in a decent job with Nurish KC. My daughter had been there for a while.
Cultivate KC.
Oh, that's right.
Very similar, though.
My daughter worked for Nurish. This Jen works for Cultivate KC. But her passion, and she used that term in the interview, was to get back in the domestic assault field. Saw it, and a resume tells you a lot, but I'll tell you, it didn't tell us what we have here. So we, I think you're going to see an alliance that's going to be a roll run.
We are very lucky.
Very fortunate to have you here.
How long have we been, how long has it been closed? 18 months approximately?
No, less than a year.
Has been less than a year?
Yep, yep.
Little over a year.
It's been a while, it's been a while. And it's, we've missed it.
Community support is great. We had people adopt the rooms, and a lady showed, I didn't go up to show her a picture, and it changed what used to look like the retraining brigade into what looks like a teenager's room with open windows. I mean, it's really...
We needed to be warm and inviting.
Sure, yeah, of course, of course. Well, we're looking forward to working with you. And I know various agencies in town, from law enforcement, the other agencies are, you know, they want it open as soon as possible. Obviously, don't rush it. Don't open if you're not ready, but the faster you can do, the better, I think. We're all concerned. It is sorely needed, unfortunately. Or the reality is, it is sorely needed. And I'm glad that you're on board and that you're going to be here. And I look forward, now that it's, things have been solidified, it'll be here for a long time, or longer than all of us here, hopefully.
Have a good Christmas.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Marsh, or?
You guys have done an outstanding job of fundraising for this. I'm just amazed. It's really great, really great. Very worthwhile.
We're not done.
General Cherry, question arms. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going into the special meeting. Need a motion to open up a special meeting?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion, second, open a special meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 4-0, we're in a special meeting. First item is second consideration ordinance, number 8093, adopting appendix F schedule of fees.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, our city clerk, Carla Williamson, couldn't be here tonight due to some issues, personal issues. But she was aware of the conversation that happened at the last meeting on first consideration. So you see in the policy report, just first a reiteration of the establishment of a new application fees and the establishment of the annual renewal fees. The city commission did adjust both of those fees downward to become more in line with our neighboring cities with the massage establishment. There's also some question about the massage costs in relation to other fees. And just to give one small example, we included the taxi cab. And there's a story almost behind every fee. And so it's almost impossible to compare them one-on-one. For example, taxi cab drivers, there's other certifications that they have to have, $25 for an ASC certified mechanic. That's not a city charge, but that's the cost of doing business. So each of these different disciplines have other fees associated. The amount also serves, I would hesitate to use the term barrier, but you want a fee on industry like massage establishment, an industry that requires an ordinance, like we just did, to have a fee that covers costs but also ensures that legitimate businesses and people are going to be serving your community. So that would be our explanation on the fee. And then also the comment from staff on why certain fees have different costs, because they're just not able to compare those on a one-on-one basis. So the issue is before you tonight with the fee as presented, with no changes from the first consideration.
Questions or comments?
I just have a, because on the first page of the policy report, we have the establishment, new application fee and the establishment annual renewal. But we also have a fee for individual massage therapists. Could you just explain that kind of cost?
That amount is $50, which is in line with a lot of the individual fees or more comparable, I suppose. So that's not the establishment fee, which is the higher number. But for the individual, working in an establishment, the fee remains at $50.
And wasn't, I saw something where like $45 of that is, and then is devoted to the background?
Right. With the change in the ordinance that we did, we've contracted with a third-party company to do background checks, and the cost of those will be $45. So your $50 that you pay the city, 45 of that will cover the background. So the city really only is receiving $5 to process an annual massage establishment license fee. So any further reduction, at that point, the city would actually be losing money on issuing licenses.
And I have a question. Last week, we passed the resolution for the ordinance minus the fees, or is this just for the fees for?
So how, when there's a fee associated with an ordinance, the fee amount is never included in the ordinance because it can change. It's included in the schedule of fees, so that if you want to change it, you wouldn't have to amend the ordinance. It's the same way with stormwater. The stormwater, where it says fee in the ordinance, it references the schedule of fees.
That's why we're dealing with fees right now for this particular line of...
We, last week was the ordinance, remember? We worked the ordinance.
And I did have one question, in terms of, and I asked the city manager, because I think if I reviewed the ordinance, 500 hours, we're saying, to get the certification. And I was just wondering, and I went online and found out that that's kind of one of the numbers that one of the national associations thinks that massage therapists should have to be, you know, properly trained to go ahead and perform this, you know, perform their tasks in relationship to their business. But is that, is that why we decided on the 500? I thought we had gone something lower. I'm comfortable with 500 after, but I just thought we had had a discussion, and I didn't know that we had ended up with 500 hours, but...
I can't remember what we were telling him.
As I remember, we discussed...
70, yeah.
Right, it was 70, right.
Had that, but, you know, we had about 15 massage therapists here, and they're talking about CEUs and what it would take to become a license. And I think during that discussion, we agreed upon 500 hours.
To get their license.
And we didn't compare it to what requires for barber or hairdresser. I'm sure theirs is more, whatever they're, you know, when they go to those schools. But during that discussion, because some of the schools are 750 hours, and I think we landed on 500 hours.
Yeah, and one of the, I don't know, one of the national associations, maybe an advocacy organization did, when I looked at it in the last week, said, you know, said about 500 hours is what their expectation was. So I just wanted to have a little discussion about that. But I know that we had, but I just didn't focus on that last week when we, when we passed that. But I understand where we are with respect to fees.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I actually got a comment. So just say if someone's licensed in another state and they come over to Kansas, do we acknowledge their license, or do they go through?
So the state of Kansas does not issue a massage establishment license, so there's no reciprocal licensing between states. So you, but you would come with your 500 hours, but you would have to get a City of Leavenworth license.
Okay, okay.
Which is what we're dealing here with.
Do you have any other business?
Gotcha.
And, you know, earlier when I talked with some of the other massage therapists, I didn't have any problem with this. In fact, they were glad we were lowering it a little bit. So the amounts are fine.
The amounts that are in the graph at the beginning, those are the ones that they originally were. We actually, we dropped those from 350 to 130.
And I think we made some other improvements, which we don't need to review tonight, but I think there were some other improvements that we made that I think facilitate, you know, the practice of the business, massage therapy business within the city.
One of the biggest ones was probably taking away the notice that they were free of all communicable diseases, having to provide a doctor's note. So that was, that was removed.
I do think there's a, there's a, the old application, I think for the, it's got the $70 thing in there. So are we going to amend that going forward?
It has 70 credit hours, and we'll amend that going forward, yes.
Yeah, that's right, 70 credit hours, that's right.
And $50 for the credit.
So will that be done for like 2019, or?
Well, it'll be done for 2020. We had sent out applications asking them to return them to us, and just made, you know, that it's under review and commission.
And it changed through it, okay.
This says in here, on our agenda, it says motion, but in here it says requires a roll call, but it should be...
It does require a roll call.
Roll call, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? None, I will call the roll and begin, this is for second consideration ordinance, number 8093, adopting appendix F schedule of fees. Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes 4-0, thank you. Next item is consider renewal of 2019 city commercial insurance package. Mr. Kramer, Mr. Riley.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is the city's insurance rate for 2019. As you'll see, there's an increase. And so we've asked our insurance broker, Mr. Riley, to come and explain what the average is related to and what you have before you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for your time. As the city manager mentioned, this is the renewal for your property liability, auto, equipment, all your specialty liability coverages. We have, let me just talk, I guess globally, about the insurance marketplace. Right now, we're seeing a little bit of a hardening in the marketplace, which means a slight rate rising environment. When we talk about the market for public entities, it's a little bit different than the overall market, given the fact that there's very few carriers that are licensed to do and are willing to do business for public entities of your size in the state of Kansas. There's really a handful of carriers that would look at your overall account. We have you with one of those carriers, One Beacon Insurance, that we've had you with for the past six years. Prior to that, we had you with Travelers Insurance for over 10 years. Those two carriers alone nationally, in the Midwest and certainly in Kansas, have the bulk of the insurance programs for public entities of your size. There's some other smaller carriers that operate on the western side of the state, small cities, small counties, small school districts. But for cities your size, Travelers and One Beacon are by far some of the best carriers out there. So we feel very comfortable with the carrier we have you with, the carriers that we have had you with over the past 15 or 16 years. What I passed around, well, let me just talk globally, I guess, maybe about the program. We have a very comprehensive program. I'm not, I won't go into in-depth, certainly willing to answer any questions, but I just wanted to hit the highlights with you a little bit. The program, again, is extremely comprehensive. I work with Carla and Carrie on a monthly basis, and then we renew things annually. For your property, for instance, we have around a $70 million blanket insurance package for all your buildings, the property that is owned. Then we have roughly $2.5 million of contents coverage, so things like desks, tables, chairs, in all of your buildings. We put that on what's called a blanket basis. So you have really $70 million of property coverage at every location throughout the city. So if something happened at the Riverfront Community Center, we have an actual limit for that building, but we actually have $70 million to play with in the event that that particular building was damaged only. Okay, so there's some, there's some unique things that we do. From a property perspective, we've been very fortunate with One Beacon in the sense that they have stayed very steady from the deductible that they require. When we left Travelers, one of the main reasons we left them was a little bit of a situation where they were drastically raising rates, but more importantly, they were putting more onus on the part of the public onus on the part of the public entities for things like deductibles. Their Travelers minimum deductible for a city your size would be $100,000 per claim for a property claim. We are at $10,000 with One Beacon, and One Beacon has held that line for a number of years, and I don't see that changing. There are some different deductibles for wind and hail and earthquake, but for a basic claim, we're at $10,000. We cover obviously all the locations that the city has. This program covers all of your equipment, and Carrie works hand-in-hand with our staff on a schedule of that equipment that is running around through all your departments. We also have a bunch of miscellaneous equipment and computers that we cover. We also cover crime coverage for the city, employee theft, forgery alterations, money and securities that are in and floating around through your premises. Some of the big coverages that we have in this program are obviously your liability coverages. The main liability is general liability for all your locations. If somebody comes onto one of your locations, slips and falls, and the city is at fault and somebody is hurt, that's a general liability claim. But we have the specialty coverages, which are your law enforcement liability and your public official liability, which are two very critical liability coverages for public entities. And again, going back to that original statement of very few carriers that do all that liability and will wrap it up into one package so that there are very few opportunities for gas and coverage. So all of that is wrapped in. And then obviously, your auto insurance, we've got a very low deductible in that regard as well, with $1,000 deductible. Again, we work with Carrie on the autos that are added and deleted throughout the year. The good part about the program is as you add vehicles throughout the year, you're not charged. So we cover those vehicles, but there's not a charge until we renew. So it's kind of unique. We've got some airport liability for everything that you do up at the airport. And so that's just a basic, kind of high-level overview of things that we're covering. What I'd like to focus on is that handout that Carrie just delivered to you. There's three tables on there, and this is what I wanted to show you. The first table is a summary of just the claims, number of claims, losses paid, the loss reserve, expense associated with those claims, and the grand total by line of business since we've had One Beacon Insurance. So that's for a six-year total. You can see we've paid or One Beacon has paid and/or has reserves of roughly $1,002,000. Okay? So on average, around a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. As we go down, I'll show you the next table. It's a summary of the last four years of your premiums, your losses, and your loss ratio. Now, we entered 2000, the renewal for 2017 on a three-year rate guarantee program offered by One Beacon Insurance. So that would have covered us for 17, 18, and also 2019 on a three-year rate guarantee. The rate guarantee program, however, had some benchmarks that had to be met in order for that rate guarantee to be continued to be offered through One Beacon. A couple of things are, number one, exposures. Your exposures can't significantly change. You're a city, you're a public entity, that's not going to be a situation, you know, different than a private business that could change directions on what they're doing. You're not going to have an exposure issue. However, we had a cap of a loss ratio of 70%, which, as you look at that second table, we have had no problem hitting traditionally with your account. So the fact, though, that we had in 2017 a loss ratio that climbed to 183% there, you see, due to a large reserve placed on the one claim, that kicked us out of that rate guarantee program for 2019. So what I provided you in that final table is the insurance renewal rate history for the past five years with One Beacon. So in 2015, they offered a renewal at 3% increase, 2016 at 1%, 2017 it was a negative 9.5%. They were flat in 2018, and as a result of that claim, and it's a reserve right now, but they, they're obviously very good at estimating what they feel is appropriate for reserves, we're coming in at an 11% increase, which is atypical for One Beacon, given their history with your account. We've really been averaging in that 2%, 3%, possibly 4% increase. Inside that 11% increase this year, there's about a 1.5% of that is in exposure. It's increased coverage for your buildings, and we added quite a bit of auto coverage this year. So about a point and a half of that is actual exposure increase and 9.5 points of rate increase. But it is a little bit of an anomaly with One Beacon, but it's really tied to losses and the potential of what they feel is going to be paid out. So that's the summary of where we're at. I wanted to come, as Carla and Carrie and I have been talking, to kind of explain that because it is abnormal for One Beacon. Right now, Travelers and One Beacon are really competitive. What we have found with Travelers is they are this huge national carrier that does this insurance game that you all know very well, where they come in and give you a one year really good premium, and then the next year, you're faced with 25 and 30% rate increases. What we've seen with One Beacon since the inception with your account is a very steady, very willing desire for them to be a long-term player of the cities. And I think they've shown that in the renewal rate history. But certainly this year, due to the loss reserve that was posted above a half a million dollars, the 11% really gets us back to almost 2017 rates.
Questions for, I just have a question about the claim. What's the claim? I mean, is it?
This was the shooting claim with law enforcement.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to talk too much about it.
No, no. Okay, well, that's fine.
That was the claim.
That's fine. Okay, that's satisfactory for me.
It all happened in one year, so we can't, we can't spread it out.
No, they posted to the year. They posted the claim to the year, which is actually good. And again, it's a reserve right now. It's pending.
Okay. Okay.
You said we changed things in all of them. Let's see, that we run $20,000 in premiums on cars. Did we lower our deductibles or what happened there?
The exposure changed in the sense that we added about a half a million dollars of value. So we had some, we had some large vehicles that were added, some SWAT vehicles, I believe. I don't know if I brought that summary.
Yeah, the value of the new stuff. Far exceeds the value of the old stuff.
Okay.
We got that brand-new flush truck.
Right, right. Yeah.
$10,000.
Yeah. And again, when you add it during the year, you don't pay for it, but it catches you up on.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Riley?
No.
Okay, this is a motion, not a roll call. I'll take the motion to approve 2019 pavement management design contract.
Okay, I move to approve.
Wait a minute.
This is the insurance.
Commercial insurance package, I'm sorry, 2019 city. I read the wrong line. All right, don't worry, we'll bring you up. She drove all the way from Kansas City, she doesn't even be able to talk, I'm sorry.
I move approval of the 2019 renewal of One Beacon commercial insurance package.
Motion, a second. Renew the 2019 city commercial insurance package. As presented, begin voting, Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Passes 4-0. Thank you, Ms. Riley. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Next item now, we're on the 2019 pavement management design contract.
I'll turn this over to our public work structure, Mike McDonald. We have, Mike can introduce our guests.
Kristen Leathers with the Fennas is here. If you have questions of her, the firm, or the project, this is brought to the city commission for the design contract for what we're calling the 2019 pavement management program. This is a continuation of the direction that we set in 2016 after we had the STANTEC laser scanning car come through town. And we spent 2016 and 17 floor ceiling, or chip ceiling, granite ceiling, if you will, streets that were rated in the 45 to 60 range, essentially north of Spruce. And last year, we spent the granite seal program south of Spruce. In addition to that, we have invested money in curbing and repairs on 20th Street. The curbing repair on 20th Street is complete. The pavement repair is expected to be, is part of the 2019 design. And we'd be moving, the curbing repair is, would be proposed, be moved in 2019. We are anticipating that we would work on the decurating concrete pavement somewhere at 20th Street between Michigan and Vilas. The interesting with the granite seal program, next year, we expect to concentrate on the group of streets that are higher rated in the 60 to 90 range, which will catch a lot of streets that have been, people wonder why we didn't do anything with them, but hopefully we'll get most of those next year. And that will reevaluate, I believe, as next year with the STANTEC, they're going to come back and scan the streets again and see what we've gotten, where we're going, and if we went the right direction with the work that we've done. The work that we're proposing for next year is a continuation of the paving on 20th Street, move the curbing replacement to 10th Avenue, which would address the curbing, whole series of noncompliant ADA ramps that'd be upgraded, as well as replacing essentially all of the drive entrances to residents and businesses. Ultimately, we think 10th Avenue work is about a three-year project. We don't know for sure part of the work this year would be the breaking interfaces that makes sense. We do know we need to replace at least that much curbing to get started.
Does that mean we're doing that curbing next year as Michigan to Vilas?
Or some of it?
Yeah.
It'd be in that area of the, that was the KDOT paving contract we did in front of the high school. It went from Michigan to Vilas. It's got the same deterioration issues that we saw on 20th Street, and we want to.
Does that mean the road probably has the same deterioration?
Yes, sir.
So we're looking at, it's not in this, but it's, we're looking at doing a major project on 10th Avenue in that, similar to what we have experienced on 20th Street.
Right. It's proposed that part of the Fennas work would be to evaluate 10th Avenue for if that's the right answer, is what we've done on 20th Street. I expect it will be, maybe we'll find a miracle cure. But I think if you want to reserve the investment in pavement, you've got to do some pretty drastic action like we've done on 20th Street.
Okay.
But that will be part, that will come out of the program, but we're proposing to spend the money on curbing because there's plenty of bad curbing out there right now.
Right, okay.
The city commission has also asked us to work on parking lots, particularly in the downtown area. The one that was completed in last year's project was the one across the street from the 10th Penny Restaurant on Sixth and Jerky. Really, it changed a lot of things. I think it kind of got people's attention unless it was started, it's kind of how, kind of dated and awful's not the right word, but it looks a whole lot more better now.
It does.
And we were proud to incorporate some of the eco things, where we run the water into the drainage swells and controls the release rate so it's not all running off at once, and it does a kind of a treatment, gives the contaminants a chance to not go into the river. We are expecting to do another parking lot next year. We identified three parking lots that we thought met the expectations of the city commission. The lot on the west side of City Hall, lots on the east side of City Hall, not all of those are ours, but the two closest to the building are. And one on the south side of Shawnee, which is immediately east of Davis-Pudle Chapel, across the street from Chamber of Commerce. We have identified a staff that, gosh, the City Hall parking lot on the west side of the building would be a good one, but that is, if there's a different direction, we can change any of them.
Talking about the one across the street here.
Yes, sir, on the west side.
On the second one, was this one over here?
Yes, sir.
Just the front half. The back half's owned by Mutual or who is it?
That's correct.
It used to be owned by Mutual, maybe it's still, yeah, I think it does still.
I think there's a map in here that Paul's reported. The shaded yellow part is the city, is the city parking lots. There's the, it used to be where the Elks Lodge, where the swimming pool, I don't know what that is. It's asphalt parking lot is, that's owned by Mutual.
Yeah.
One of the interesting kind of little things that works in here is Westar has contacted us actually last fall, or earlier this year, about they would be interested in installing an electric vehicle charging station in one of the parking lots. No cost to the city, it's not a free place, you've got to pay for your credit cards, charge your electric car. And we thought for certain that we would be able to find a place for it, and we talked about perhaps incorporating that into the parking lot there. By 10th Penny and the business said parking's tight enough, we really don't want the added confusion of electric charging stations in there. But we think these other parking lots, there's enough give in there that would be warranted to install one without adversely impacting any of the local businesses. So whichever parking lot we do, our plan would be to work with Westar to install one of these charging stations. Work for 10 cars.
And they, they take a credit card or a debit card or something like that.
And most of the hotels seem to have them anymore.
Yeah, no, you have to have them.
Yeah, I agree.
So we're excited about that, and that is, once again, no cost to the public for that. That's something that Westar wants to do as they grow their different lines of business. We prepared kind of a, where the budget goes, it's amazing how fast you can spend $1.3 million. And that's shown on the second page of the policy report that discusses these programs that I've just described. Ultimately, it will be re-inspected with the electronic scan car. It also includes design for the 2020 pavement management program, and then all of those projects, the granite seal work, parking lot work that we just discussed. President's here, if you have questions about what we do and how we do it, they've been working with us for many years on these types of programs, very happy with their work and the plans. And particularly when it comes to inspection, we work very well together. If we have inspectors that need something to do, they don't have to have theirs unless it's a special, special part of the project or we're shorthanded and they may have people that are usually available to help in full costs on that.
I have a question. In terms of the recommendations you're making to the commission, is this based on a five-year pavement management plan, or is it based on a plan that was approved, what, a few years ago? Did I read something along those lines?
Yes, sir. In 2016, we had the STANTEC scan car come through and look at our pavement. And what we found was, it was actually lower rated than we had anticipated. In fact, if we, our comments at the time were, if we don't do something with these mid-range rated streets and we reach, clear down to 45, we're going to have a whole bunch of really bad rated streets. And so this is a continuation of that plan to try and stabilize this for three or four years. And 2019 would be essentially the fourth year of that. And then we'll get this, we'll get the report back and see, okay, now what do we do?
This, the proposal and the specific components of the proposal seem, you know, acceptable, seem good to me, but are there other requirements that we're not seeing tonight? In other words, each year, we should take a look at this plan, right? In other words, this is a one-to-end list, or I'm sure there's other requirements, we only have so much money. So, and so I was just thinking that at some point, you know, I'd like to see that one-to-end list in terms of the requirements that, you know, we could debate about. I'm not questioning what you've recommended to us, but I think going forward, that would be one of my desires.
I think that's kind of the direction we're going. When the STANTEC had completed the ratings, we realized we were in that, we had that mid-range chip ceiling, the granite seal is what we've been using. This will be the third year we've been doing that. We've actually accelerated that a little bit to cover more streets because it's a great product for bang for your buck and stretches those midline rated streets to gain some more life out of those. So I think that's what we focused on this time as a strategy. That's not to say that strategy doesn't change. When we get the new ratings in, we may have a may have a wider gap of ratings, higher rated streets, lower rated streets, and then come up with some other methods of preservation. Chip seal may be one of those tools, some of the others may be a milling overlay, which we had done previously, but the chip seal was a good way to tackle a lot of streets, and really kind of get things buttoned up, if you will, because once the pavement opens up and is cracking and water gets in there and moisture, then that's when things start to really disintegrate and deteriorate back more quickly. So we took the chip seal tact, knowing that we could get things sealed up tight, and then worked the program once we get the new ratings in, in 19.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, one of the areas that, that, you know, I'm not recommending any substitution here, but, and I had mentioned it earlier several months ago at one of our meetings, is the road over here on the Kansas side of the Centennial Bridge, particularly the curbing now, and I know that's all wrapped up, it used to be with KDOT funds and everything, but can we evaluate that? I mean, this looks terrible, and I would say it's in a state of disrepair, but is that something that we would do with this program?
You could spend every last penny of this on there, and you might get most of the curbing fixed.
Well, right. So I'd just like to see what that, what that bill is at some point.
I, I mentioned the appearance of that bridge with my friends at KDOT, pretty much every time I see them. They do have some work scheduled on the bridge this coming year, the expansion joints, where the pieces all come together, and I believe there's actually, believe it or not, some curbing and drainage repair work they're going to do, it may be 2020.
Okay.
And that it may be 2019, I've lost track. We do, we got approval from them to run the sweeper up there once in a while, and I guess the day they did it, they had traffic backed up for a couple of miles, because there was a lot swept up. But yet, that is, that is state responsibility, state maintenance, metropolitan, and the bridge itself. And feel free to let your elected officials know that there's always opportunity to invest money in transportation and do that as a thing.
We did that, I mean, we didn't get down to the details of what we just talked about, but actually, we've talked about the county maybe standing up a task force with respect to a transportation plan, and my opinion is that that should be, you know, a high priority in terms of, you know, improvement, or it's just going to keep deteriorating. It doesn't look very good either, so.
It doesn't, and the state, state's aware of it, they will tell you that it's not in danger of collapse or danger in the public, but it does not look good.
Right. One thing to point out here, we budget approximately 1.3 million for pavement management annually, right in that area. And obviously, you've used all of that, the good example of bond, using bond money that we're going to use on Thornton, we're estimating, is he, I know that it's going out for bid in March, April, you won't get the bids back till May, but that could be a $5 million, you know, just fall parking a $5 million project. And if we had used just our pavement management funds just for that, it'd take four years to pay for it, and not one other thing in the city to get done. So I, we, this is a good use of that money, and it's very good use of the bond money to do Thornton, because Thornton is, is in a big state of disrepair, needs, needs some help. The 500,000 that comes off 20th Street, because next year will be the final leg on 20th Street, it'll last three eighths a mile, a half a mile, whatever it would be. All the curbing's done, this is just the milling overlay. There's a good possibility that that 500,000 isn't necessarily going to go in the bank, it's probably a good chance to be dedicated to 10th Avenue the following year. Can't, can't promise that, but...
Correct.
And best guess would be that, because we think it may have the same deterioration problems.
It would be 2020 before we could start that work on the pavement itself, but that would, that's the direction staff is going, pending other guidance from the commission.
Now, I just like, on terms of bang for buck, I really do, am very impressed with the, particularly the parking lot that was recently done on Cherokee.
Interesting, yeah.
Very, very good. So in terms of the parking lots that are recommended as part of this plan going forward, I'm very supportive, from the standpoint of functionality plus appearance. I mean, functionality is obvious, but so is the, the improvement in, in appearance of the parking lot that I just talked about. And the other thing just is that, I mean, the fact that we have at least two programs with respect to trying to improve the roads, right? I mean, the pavement management program, and then what the mayor just talked about in terms of the, you know, using the, the bond approach for, in this case, Thornton, but, so, and I don't know if that's completely understood by the public, but I'm, that's something that, that I've learned, you know, since I've been on, on the commission, so I don't know if we have any other program, but those are the two big ones, right, with respect to allocating resources for the roads.
Right, there, the money for pavement management that's come through the sales tax, and then there was additional, the, the long-term street plan, which is, it all comes out of the regular pocket of the taxpayers, but we kind of look at it differently, and there's some that segregate.
The pavement management program, simplify it, we pay cash for that.
Yes.
The Thornton project, for example, we get a mortgage.
Right.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's... And if we couldn't get, if we wouldn't get a mortgage for Thornton, we would have to stop this program for four years until we had the cash in hand, and nothing would get done, including Thornton, and then get that done, and the rest of the town, the rest of the streets.
Get worse and costing more.
So that's why you have to bond it at times. And yet, go ahead, man.
No, that's all. I was agreeing. She summarized it well.
Anything else, sir? Oh, I did, I did have one other question. The eighty, the, because we're going to make a motion here and vote on 80, 84,730. Now, I didn't see that specifically, that, that amount as we went down, so...
That's in this current year, 2018's, 2018's budget, there's money set aside.
For 2019?
For the work it will do, 2019.
Okay, I got it.
The money that you see, 2020, 2000, it's a thousand, 105,000 is...
I got it.
Plug number that we expect we would be under that, in that design contract a year from now.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Matt, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve design services contract with the Fennas Corporation in an amount not to exceed 84,730 for the 2019 pavement management program.
Second.
Motion is second to approve 2019 pavement management design contract with the Fennas as presented. Begin voting, Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Passing 4-0. Thank you very much for being here. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Next item, first consideration ordinance for a special use permit for solar panels at 2400 South 15th Street.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, solar panels are allowed in this particular zoning, however, only solar panels up to 500 square feet. The property in question at 2400 South 15th Street is requesting, I believe it's 598 square feet of solar collection area, therefore, they'd request a special use permit to allow the solar energy collection. This item did go to the planning commission, the planning commission, as you can see through the criteria, went through the request, and did vote 5-0 to recommend approval of special use, special use permit request for the increase in size of the solar panels. Staff also agrees with that recommendation, and it's before the city commission tonight for first consideration.
Any questions, comments?
This is on the corner of 15th and Vilas, correct?
It's a little, it's a little down from there, it's about two, two blocks down. I drove by the house today, it's 2400, so it's about, I don't know, it's about a football field's length from Vilas, but it's, yes, it's near the intersection of Vilas and 15th.
It's north of Vilas, correct?
It's north of Vilas, correct. That's correct, yeah.
Is that South Street that cuts through there?
And it's on the west side of 15th Street.
I know, South Street.
Yeah. But this is, is this the first, well, there are other projects like this, but they've been under 500 square feet, does that matter?
We've issued special use permits before, and it depends on the zoning and in this zoning, anything over 500 has to get a special use permit.
Okay. Well, that's a good initiative.
I've got some in my neighborhood.
Do you?
They usually put it on a southern exposure, we're calling that has a very good southern exposure, and any other exposures, it's a commission payoff. So he's using, what is it, 598, the policy report, 598 square feet, if he had 500 or less, he could just do it.
Right.
Bring this to the planning commission, they review it.
I think he's going to put the, like you said, on the south and the eastern portions of the roof.
And there was a public hearing, there was no pushback from any neighborhood.
No, I saw that.
Okay, any questions or comments? Have a consensus, move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, see it, January 8th, maybe, three weeks from tonight. Okay, do you have the wording for the, do I have it here on the back?
There it is.
Okay. I think we need, what were we thinking, 15, or? Let's start with 15, if we need to extend, we'll extend, and you'll be in. Okay, I move that we recess into executive session to discuss the annual performance review of the city manager pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters exception, KSA 75-4319, subparagraph B, subparagraph 1. Open meeting to resume in the city commission chambers at 8:15 by the clock, city commission chambers. Human Resources Director Lana Lanter is requested to attend.
Second.
Motion is second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session, we'll be back at 8:15. Our executive session will be back at 8:15.
Yes.
You mean not a week from today?
Yes.
We're back in regular session. Discuss this. Do we have any motions? We do need a motion on what was discussed. So, does someone make a motion?
I move that we approve a 2% merit.
Pay increase.
Pay increase.
A second.
On the salary of our city manager, Paul Kramer.
To be effective today, December 18.
To be effective today, December 18. Thank you.
A second. Motion second to buy the 2% merit increase to city manager Kramer, effective December 18, 2018, begin loading with Mr. Griswold.
Aye.
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 As is four to zero. Next thing is discussion among commissioners. Commissioner Patter.
Just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We won't see you until after the first of the year.
Same to you, same to all.
Happy New Years.
I would, just like Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners, just take a minute to mark the passing yesterday of Hersh Chapman, Colonel, United States Army, retired, an Iowa native, West Point graduate, combat veteran of the Korean and Vietnam wars, and most significantly since 1980, a resident of Leavenworth and successful downtown businessman who through his selfless and civic-minded deeds over nearly four decades demonstrated his love for his adopted hometown, Leavenworth, Kansas, the first city of Kansas. So rest in peace, Colonel. You will be missed, but not forgotten.
Very good.
Hersh, for those that knew, Hersh Chapman, texture around town, laborious jewelry. He attended most sporting events, especially basketball. His granddaughter was an outstanding basketball player. I'm a high in that. She went and played in, were you Washburn? Washburn?
Washburn.
Washburn. Hersh is quite a guy, deeply involved, contributed a lot of money to the renovation of sportsfield. Yeah, he was quite civic-minded and a great man. And he, as Mr. Griswold said, he will be missed. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
I echo everyone else, want to share a one Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. We will not be back in session until Tuesday, January 8.
Aye.
So it's three weeks from tonight. So, meantime, please be careful and enjoy the holidays. Mr. Gray. Ms. Collins.
Yes, sir.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Submoved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.